Oh, yeah. Okay. Good evening. This is the December 11th, 2019 hearing for the Health Committee. I am Councilman Christopher Burnett, Chair of the Committee. Also, we are joined by Bill Hemery, representing the 4th District and member of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
From his office, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Nina. Sorry, your last name?
Thamalos.
Thamalos, sorry, is here from the Mayor's Office. We also... And what I'll do is for the agencies, I'll allow you to just introduce staff, because I don't know everybody. And to my right is Marguerite Karen, the Committee Staff. This evening, we will continue a series that the Health Committee has embarked on over 2019 and into 2020 on the social determinants of health. This topic of lead paint is one, and exposure to lead paint is one that is incredibly important in the city of Baltimore, and one that we have to do a tremendous amount of work on. So the intention of this hearing is to get a sort of a lay of the land as to what is happening, what is the scope of the problem, what different agencies are doing about it, and to hear from experts in the field, from outside of city government, to provide more feedback for the Committee. The long-term goal of this, these series, is to build out a policy agenda, an advocacy agenda, on a number of topics, including this one. But this one is very, very important and dear to me. So thank you all for making time to come out this evening. It is also going to be televised on Charm TV, Channel 25, so hello to everyone that's watching, and please share the link once it's posted. We need to make sure that this conversation very much rises to the top. What I would like to do is, we do have representatives here, from the Baltimore City Health Department, Department of Housing, Community Development, and the Housing Authority. We'll just start with the Health Department. If you will, one, just introduce members of the staff, and then we'll let you go into the presentation, but we'll go through each agency to just let everybody know who's here and what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. DePaul Nibber, on behalf of the Baltimore City Health Department, I am joined by our Deputy Commissioner, Mary Beth Haller, our Assistant Commissioner for Chronic Disease, Mr. Greg Cilio, and then our Case Management Supervisor, Ms. Yolanda Wilton. And our presentation this evening will be delivered by Deputy Commissioner Haller.
Thank you. And we've been joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, from the 14th District and member of the Committee. We're just getting started, no worries. All right, Department of Housing, Community Development. I'd like to just say who's here and from the agency.
Hi, yes. Did you want our presentation now, or just to announce who's here?
Just who's here, yeah.
Oh, okay. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined today by Deputy Commissioner Alice Kennedy of DHCD's Office of Home Ownership and Neighborhood Preservation, as well as Deputy Commissioner Jason Hessler of Permits and Litigation.
Thank you. Housing Authority of Baltimore. Housing Authority? Right here. Do you want to introduce yourself? I think it's just you here.
I'm sorry.
Could you introduce yourself?
My name is Bill Peach. I'm the Senior Manager for Housing Administration for the Housing Authority of Baltimore City.
Thank you. And we'll also, aside from presentations from each of these agencies, we will also have Ruth Ann Norton from Green and Healthy Homes, Dr. Lawrence Brown from Morgan State University, Dr. Michael Illanowski, American Academy of Pediatrics, and Dr. Alexander Wooton from Morgan State University as well.
I'm looking for Ruth Ann.
Ruth Ann has a team here, but I'm...
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh. Perfect, okay. All right. So what we'll do, we have a number of presentations, and if anyone from the public would like to testify, we'll do the presentations first, take questions from the Committee, and then go to public testimony. If anyone here wants to testify from the public, please make sure you sign in at the back. And with that, we will get started with the presentation from the Baltimore City Health Department.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to first thank the Chair and the Council Members that are on the Committee here for giving us this opportunity to speak about this incredibly important issue. If you would direct your attention, please, to the presentation there. This is a slide that some of you may have seen recently. This represents the cases of lead poisoning, which in this slide is represented by a level, a blood lead level of 10 or above across the period of years that are there indicated. You can see the declining, the declining lead levels, so you can see progress is being made, great amount of progress. But you can also see that there's quite a bit still to do, because even one child who is exposed to lead is going to have devastating lifelong effects from that exposure. This next slide, this is the confirmed cases for calendar year 2018 of the other Maryland counties. And these slides are from the state lead report, and I'm providing this just to put in context the work that we're doing as well. For other confirmed cases in the Maryland counties, you can see that the total cases that were referred were 136. Of those, they were able to access, you know, gain entry to properties in 115, and they completed environmental investigations in 122. With regard to Baltimore City, we had actually 99 cases referred in calendar year 2018. Of those, we were able to conduct the medical home visit in 88 cases, and we were able to complete the environmental investigation, 79. One of the reasons we don't get into every property, the way we basically do this is we have first, the medical intervention, because the environmental intervention, that's really an enforcement-based intervention, where we could ultimately issue a violation notice against the property. So the first team that comes in would be the medical team, sort of the front leaguer face. They come in, they work very closely with the family, and we're actually going to be handing out a questionnaire that they go through. I just wanted you to see this as a reference. These are the questions that are asked. They sit down with the family when they do this medical case visit, and what they're doing is doing the setup to look for all the possible sources of lead that may be in the home. Some of the challenges for us, for our ability to get into properties, sometimes there's a general mistrust of authorities. Sometimes we have difficulty actually locating the family. This could be, you know, and it could be because the lab in the original referral is missing current contact information for the parent or guardian. There's also transient issues, housing instability, frequent moves. Sometimes people move out of the jurisdiction. And then sometimes there's even fear of retaliation in the case where it may be, you know, a leased property, a rental property. So I do want to speak for a moment about the type of, the occupancy type for the, where the cases are coming from. In Baltimore City, we have rental housing accounts for 60% of the, 60.6% of the cases in the pre-50 category. And the reason we have these breakdowns of pre-1950, and then the next range, 50 to 77, and then post-1977, is because in Baltimore City, ahead really of the nation, the first ban on the use of residential lead paint in property was put into place by the then Health Commissioner. So for us, anything that's pre-50 has a very, very high probability that it may have lead paint there. There was still lead paint available, and even though it was not supposed to be used in residential uses in the city, some use continued between those two years. And then after 1977, the Consumer Safety Protection Act came into place, and then nationwide, there was a ban on that, that use of lead paint in consumer end products. So the breakdown for Baltimore City, for the rental occupied units, it was 60 cases, came from pre-50 housing, as would be expected. 1950, 1977, there were eight, and post-1977, there were two. And this is just the occupancy type. I'm not addressing whether or not there was lead paint in the home, but that is where the residence of the child was who had the elevated blood lead level. For owner-occupied properties, there were 28 children in pre-50 housing. There was one in 1950 to 1977, and none in post-1977 housing. So I want to speak very briefly about the sources of lead exposure, of lead hazards. In Baltimore City, of the homes that we were able to, you know, we completed environmental questionnaires, we worked with the family, we identified 148 sources that were related to lead-based paint hazards, primarily lead paint, lead dust. There were two that we related to water or soil, where we did the inspection, and the house didn't have lead paint. But we then discovered that, you know, through the questionnaire, we ask, you know, where's the child playing? Where are they visiting? Where are the common play areas around the house that the child is, is when outdoors? And taking soil samples, then we were able to find that that is where the most likely hazard that caused the child to have the elevated blood lead level. And then 14 were non-paint lead sources. That made up 18, or rather, 8.6 of the cases. We have an increasing immigrant population in Baltimore City. Some, some of the products that are used, they may have been used in a prior location, prior to coming to the United States. There are products that are used, such as iCole, and there could be lead-containing jewelry that is, it may be brought in with the family. That can possibly cause a case of lead poisoning. Of course, lead dust, it could be from another residence, or again, in the country of origin. It's possible that that was not, in fact, you know, they don't have the kind of standards we have here. And also in spices, and some, frankly, some home remedies, and that sort of thing. In Maryland counties, this was, sorry. In Maryland counties, that's actually a bigger problem. 100 of the cases they had, they actually identified 414 non-paint lead sources. So that's why I'm mentioning this about, you know, these other possible sources. As we get into these smaller and smaller numbers of cases that we're getting, you know, we have to make sure we're looking everywhere, because as we're having an increased population that may be coming in from a different country, we want to make sure that those families are protected too, and that they receive the education, some of these products that are being used in the home may be contributing to a child's blood lead level. So this is just an overview of the state of Maryland. This is the distribution of lead hazard type. As you can see in Baltimore City, with the blue there, it really is still lead paint in housing. You know, make no mistake, we have a lot of work to do in that area, and that is the primary concern still in the city of Baltimore. But if you compare that to, for example, some of the other counties, you can see there that, you know, the, the sources are different than here. So these are just some pie charts on the pre-50 rental, as you can see, 70... I can almost not read that, but it looks like 71. Is it 71 or 79? Thank you. 71% were, in fact, you know, from, from lead paint. And this is just basically a reflection of the numbers that I went over earlier, showing, you know, the sources. We're, the way we become informed about lead elevated blood lead levels is we're informed, we're notified of the Maryland Department of Environment that a child has an elevated blood lead level. Maryland law requires, then, that environmental inspection take place, a medical case management take place when the child is identified, if it is above 10 micrograms per deciliter. I definitely want to point out, though, that the legislation that passed in 2019 will bring that level down to, you know, of greater than five. So this is going to offer a much better protection for our children. In Baltimore City, we were already taking action at five, but this gives us the legal authority to do that environmental investigation, issue violation notices, and the like. So this is, this is a very, very important step for us. So some of the support services that we provide to the families of poisoned children, of course, the environmental home inspection, the medical case management, healthy home supplies, you know, green cleaning supplies, a CO2 detector. We coordinate with hospitals, we, again, with the healthy home supplies, which include, you know, doormats, mousetraps. We look at sort of the whole home, because this also includes things that would trigger asthma, because sometimes, many, many times, children that have asthma are also in the kind of, kind of substandard housing that would lend itself to chipping, flaking lead paint. So that's something that we cover, sort of as a, you know, the healthy homes model. We refer to our legal, our attorney when we have ordered property owners to fix up their properties, and they, you know, particularly with rental properties, where they have not complied with the order, we do refer those for legal action. And we also refer families to, you know, the appropriate external resources with our other connections, and many partners. We coordinate with Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development quite a bit. We coordinate with the housing inspectors on violations. We refer to the Lead Hazard Reduction Program. We refer to other healthy homes programs, such as the weatherization program, special loans and rehab programs. We coordinate with the Housing Authority on environmental medical case management for kids with EBLs. We provide healthy homes training for HABC staff and to tenants. We coordinate with HABC Maintenance on healthy homes issues. We refer to Mayor's Office Human Services, Mayor's Office of Emergency Development, sorry, Baltimore City Fire Department, Baltimore City Police Department, and other partner agencies. You know, an example of this would be when we're in the home, and if the home doesn't have a fire detector, we're then referring that, or a CO2 detector, we're going to be referring that and providing, so that we make sure the family is provided with that. So lead testing in Baltimore City, this is, this has been a challenge, it's a challenge, it's a challenge in the whole state. We test children for lead exposure, now actually using point-of-care testing device. We do this, we take this on the road with us for health fairs, community events, health clinics, and through our partner organizations, and we can administer it as a follow-up test for our medical case management team. This compares the 2018 numbers, looking at a total population of children aged one year of 10,850. Of that number, 5,457 were tested, so roughly half. Two-year-olds, again, 10,428 children were living in Baltimore in that age group. But of those, it's about, again, about half that were tested. So this is the, this is our, one of our primary prevention tools, is getting children tested. Go ahead to the next slide, if you will. So we recently launched a lead testing campaign. It included MTA advertising. It was launched with Dr. Girasa Mary Young in September of this year. It highlights the importance of blood lead testing in Baltimore City bus, in Baltimore City. It's on bus ads located in bus shelters and metro stations in areas where the highest incidence of lead poisoning has been found. There's also a toolkit that was developed for primary care providers, because we want our providers to be offering this test. We want to make sure that they are, that they are informed, and they know to be offering this test and doing this test, so that all children are tested. This was done in partnership with the American Association of Pediatricians. It provides them with valuable information on lead poisoning and, and discussion about best practices to try and get the highest rates among, of testing among, among their patients. The Maryland State Department of Education Child Care Partnership is working with the Maryland State Department of Education and all the city's childcare centers to ensure of all, to ensure that all of the children who are enrolled in childcare have their lead test record, their lead tests on record. So this is another way of approaching it. So if you go to the childcare, you're going to, but, and they're going to ask, has your child been tested? That's another way of notifying parents, and again, reinforcing with them, this is extremely important to have your child tested. There's also a lot of direct resident outreach. We're also partnering with the managed care organizations to identify children that have not been tested at 12 and 24 months as required by law, in order to alert their parents to the need for this, and the dangers of lead poisoning and not providing testing, and not, not, you know, accessing testing resources. All of this work that I've, you know, described in brief, I in no, in no way want to make it seem like this is, you know, a solo act on the Department of Health Department. This is an incredible partnership that has developed over years, and I just wanted to give a shout-out and just list a couple of our partners. This, again, this is not all of them, but Maryland Department of Health, the Department of the Environment, Department of Housing, Green and Healthy Homes Initiative, a critical partner, the managed care organizations who are working with us to identify providers who are performing not as well as others in getting their patients tested, so that we can outreach to them directly. You know, and, you know, sort of leverage that to try and get them to increase their testing numbers. And also, working with federally qualified health centers to try and get them to work towards this point-of-care testing. And the reason point-of-care testing is important, and this has been discussed over the years, and it's a problem statewide, is there are a lot of barriers. You know, if a parent has to, you know, take a bus and then go to the waiting room, and then go to a different lab, you know, and then wait for the results, you know, this, this is another trip. The idea would be, when they go to that wellness visit, if they're getting their test then, right there on the spot, using one of these devices, we then get the result. And, and that's a very important way to increase testing numbers. And we're working to try and get a grant to help them to purchase, to purchase some of these, these machines, because we're really, really pushing on trying to get these numbers increased. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? I know I have a few, but...
Every time I came up with one, you answered it like 30 seconds later, so...
Thank you.
I do. I know we have to get through a lot of people. I won't.
Thank, thank you very much for your report and for the work of the Health Department. I may have missed it, I was turning pages. But is there any required testing for lead paint of the children who live in Baltimore City? And if so, at what age is ideal?
There is, there is a requirement to have a child's blood tested at ages, at age one and two.
Both?
And this has been actually, in Baltimore City, we actually had this, this is actually in our, in our health code, but also statewide. There were certain ZIP codes that were selected years ago that were, that made the testing, you know, mandatory, and most of it, and I think all of our ZIP codes actually were included in that. But the state has actually since recognizing the need for testing, has gone statewide with universal testing. So now regardless of where you live in the state of Maryland, the law is to have your child tested at ages one and two.
So you must?
You must, you must.
So is it required for entrance into daycare or pre-K or K?
Yes, you are supposed to show evidence of the blood test, test before entry into school and into daycare.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That was one of my questions, thank you. So I, sorry, I had a couple more. Can you go into a little bit more detail about how lead exposure interacts with nervous system? Like what are the, the health impacts that are visible and not visible to someone that has been exposed to lead?
I can, and I believe there may be some folks here that have more of a medical background than I do, but simply stated, it impairs brain development. And because of this, it can have devastating effects. It can be at very high levels, it can lead to coma or death, seizures. At low levels, there's an absolute drop in IQ, which is, which is going to affect the child's education for the rest of their life. You know, there are headaches, seizures, it can cause organ damage. I can give you actually, you know, sort of a breakdown on, on a chart, if you would like to see that.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
But there's sort of escalating effects that just get worse and worse. And once it happens, it's irreversible. It's not something that, that you can then set, you can then change. Once that damage occurs, it has occurred. You can reduce the levels by removing them from the thing, from the exposures.
Yeah, I was...
The level will ultimately fall, but the damage that, that it caused will be permanent. And the longer they have that level, and this is why, again, why lead testing is so important, because once you identify it, you want to get as quickly as possible to try and figure out where the exposure is coming from, so you can reduce it, to minimize that impact as quickly as possible.
I have another question.
Do you want to follow up on that?
No, take your time.
Wow. Yeah, I didn't know that that was, I mean, obviously, we knew removing people out of the situation obviously is the best step, but definitely troubling to hear that. Because one of my follow-ups was around, obviously, you hit it on, you know, mandatory testing, one and two. Are there, is there outreach for folks who are outside of that range, elderly populations, that may not have been reached in sort of the early, earlier phases of this seemingly expanded outreach efforts from both the state and the local levels? Can you speak to, you know, are there, is there work being done in our senior centers and senior housing for folks who may have been exposed at a younger age, and may be dealing with complications that may not be, just to keep, I guess, with the life cycle of, of the outreach?
These are the ages that were selected, because these are the children that are most at risk. One of the primary means of becoming lead poisoned is by ingesting it, often through hand-to-mouth behavior that children naturally exhibit at that age. So those are the very, very critical ages, and where you're going to see most of the cases fall. We don't limit it, we encourage testing for, for any child under the age of six, and, and it is required to show that you've had, your child has had a lead test before you go into, into pre-K or first grade, so those children will be older.
I do. So following up on that, okay, so you're, the law says that a child in this city, maybe in this state, but right now, in the city, at the age of one and at the age of two, must be tested for lead paint, or lead ingestion, or levels. And five is the number we're using now, under which people are safe, or five and over is not.
Right. For the, for the state law, it's currently at 10 and above, but in Baltimore City, we go ahead and intervene when we receive a report of a five or above.
Right.
We don't have the full range that you would have in all of the legal, you know, availability of certain legal remedies, but we are already meeting with the family and already trying to reduce those, those levels.
Okay, that, and that was my next question, which is, because I don't remember this at all. So, all right, so a child is found to have elevated lead levels, a two-year-old. And you're going to follow up, Health Department will follow up with visits to try to identify, so that's the medical, to try to identify the source within a given habitat of the lead. But does the family have a legal obligation to follow up? Is there some legal obligation for follow-up by the family members or by the Health Department, or by somebody to make sure that, that remedy, remedies are in place?
For the tenant-aboves, we, we have medical case management. So they're actually, it's sort of a two-track system. So we have essentially one of our community health workers who works with the family. They're public health investigators, they work with the family, and they have periodic retests, and they're working closely with the family to try and get the level down. That's kind of the medical side of the house. Concurrently, we would do the environmental investigation. That's where we're going into the home. If it is a rental property, there are certain legal remedies that we can take. We do referrals to MDE. We refer to our partners, such as GHHI. And we begin that process of enforcement. So they're issued a violation notice and given a certain amount of time in which they're to abate the property. And then, under state law for rental properties, there are certain, certain steps that have to be taken. The family can't be there in the middle of the, you know, of an abatement and the like. So it's really this two-tracked approach.
Okay. So basically, you've got, this is a state law that is really the obligation legally, originally, of the state of Maryland, right?
Well, in Baltimore City, we have testing requirements for blood lead.
Okay, well, yeah, and you've clarified that, because I didn't, I guess, I didn't realize that we, we had our own as compared to living by the states and fighting for the state to reduce to five. But that's good to know. So, so basically, my question is, how in the world do you do all this? We have probably hundreds and hundreds of houses where people are living that has, have lead paint, or some kind of lead in them. And you have a limited staff, so it's like a discrepancy, or at least it's a discrepancy I remember from the last time we visited this issue, and it was in a prior council. Do you have enough personnel to do the follow-up, the inspections, the follow-up, the hand-holding, the, the getting through bureaucracy of testing and remediation? Do you have that kind of staff level?
Well, we can always use more. However...
Yes.
I, I do want to point out that the cases that we're following through case management, these aren't, these are, these are homes of children who have been referred to us. So for 2018, I believe the number was 99. So there were enough staff to do...
Those, 99.
...to work with those 99 families. When the level drops in '21, there's, to five...
There'll be more.
Then that's going to, that's going to, sorry, in calendar year 20, in 2021, sorry. We expect a bump up in cases again, because then it's going to be including those lower-level cases.
Right. Right.
So we'll see that, that line on the graph. We may see it go up and then the hope is, of course, to see it go back down again, once we're getting those children into case management.
So this is, I mean, you're in charge of this in Baltimore City. That, you're who we got.
There are, our partners at the state are critically important, as are our partner organizations, I have to say, because.
Oh, I know, yeah. We know that. We know that the local nonprofits, advocacy organizations are like.
No, they're amazing.
They're on time, all the time. But what about state government? What, why are they so important? What are they still doing in regard to the subdivisions, in regard to us? What do they bring to the table?
The state is actually sort of the repository of all the information around this. They are, they are the authority. They have the lead poisoning prevention program for the state. So they are the ones who are referring these cases to us.
So that's where the referrals are coming from?
Yes, they come to us and then we begin the, the, the work with the family.
And where are they getting the referrals?
They're getting them from the lab slips that are, have to be sent by the lab by law, once that blood lead test has.
And that's coming from the medical sector?
Coming from the medical sector, providers, you know.
And, but they're not going in to inspect the houses? That's your people?
They do in many counties.
But I mean ours.
But here, we, we do the inspections here.
Because we're better at it or because they won't send them?
Um, we have a bigger issue and we just need a more robust program.
I got you. Very diplomatic.
So.
Thank you.
So the only other question I had, I had a few for DACD, so I'll wait till we, we get there. You mentioned, you know, the, the, it's a larger issue here in Baltimore and has been historically. Are there testing, does testing occur on, as we demolish properties on those vacant lots? That do it at some point end up at, in the, under DACD control? So if it's a DACD question, let me know. That's a concern, especially we, as we push for more urban farming and reclaiming of these, these lots through the Adopt a Lot program and other, and other initiatives. And then two, are, is there a need to test water lines that are going into people's houses? I mean, knowing that this is an issue in Baltimore City schools, which actually we probably should have had here and maybe have a follow-up on that with city schools. But we know that that's why the water fountains aren't utilized because of the old infrastructure. Is that same challenge, does that exist for your traditional rowhouse in, in East and West Baltimore? Is that something that is happening or is that not a concern?
That's a bit of a tough one, just because the Department of Public Works, because we're on this public water system. They do have testing protocols in place under, I want to say, the Safe Drinking Water Act, the Lead and Copper Rule. So it may be a question that we want to also ask them. But I believe the service lines in Baltimore City, certainly leading up to the private divide, if you will. I believe that in Baltimore City, those were replaced or we don't have them anymore. So that is clearly a huge help. And I know that some of their tests that they have to perform under the Safe Drinking Water Act are done in consumers' homes. There's a certain percentage that have to be done in consumers' homes. I wouldn't want to go further on that, but I know that there are testing protocols in, in place with regard to water. With regard to lots, particularly lots that might later be, you know, reused for urban gardening and the like. I know the Office of Sustainability does work with urban gardeners and does have the, the Adopt a Lot and, and various programs. And they are very well aware, and I've had meetings with them regarding lead levels in soil and the up, possible uptake into the vegetation. And, you know, how to plant, how to, you know, there are proto, not protocols, but there are certainly guidelines around, you know, how one can, can actually use those lots.
Okay. And I would ask, you know, if you could add, I, we didn't have anyone here from DBW, I don't believe. But if, just for informational purposes for the committee, if we could have a follow-up on the water line replacement question.
And I just had one final point, and that was that I, the handout that I gave, I didn't really go into. But when we spoke about the sources, this is the questionnaire that the case management worker goes through in the home to try and identify all the sources of lead. And it's, it's a fairly robust questionnaire. And, you know, at your leisure, you can take a look at that. I just thought you might find it of interest.
Yeah, we all have it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Department Housing, Community Development?
Good evening. Jason Hessler, Deputy Commissioner for Permits and Litigation with Baltimore City Department Housing, Community Development. Department Housing's presentation is actually kind of split in two between myself and Deputy Commissioner Kennedy. Because we both kind of work in relation to lead-based paint and in, in two different arenas. And sometimes we overlap and then other times we work with our friends at Health Department and MDE. So I'm going to just go through mainly what is, falls under the permits and litigation side of how we do enforcement, do education and, and other items around that. So actually, back in, I think it was like around two thousand and six, two thousand, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, we amended all of our violation notices in the city. So anytime we issue a violation notice, whether it's interior, exterior, or a vacant building or a sanitation item, those notices go out with a lead warning statement with, within them, just to educate the public that may be receiving that violation notice that lead is a concern, you know, it's a hazard and it provides information to both the Maryland Department of the Environment and Green and Healthy Homes and websites for additional information. So that was one of our, our first steps in bumping up what we were doing in the housing and code enforcement side. In addition to that, we amended all of our violation notices whenever we issue a violation for flaking paint in a property. We don't do testing for whether or not it's lead-based paint. But any violation notice that's issued for flaking paint or defective wall, defective surface that is most likely painted, those violations got amended to include language that makes it a notice of defect, which puts the property owner or notice that they need to make corrections and follow proper lead standards and do proper testing. And that, our notices that go out, which are sent by certified and regular mail to the owner of the property and anybody else we can find that has a, a interest in that property, are, they're sent certified regular mail and posted on the property. And then we have attempt contacts with that owner. That can be used in the enforcement piece if it has to go to MDE as a notice of defect. So they don't have to start from scratch when they get the referral. They can actually go back to when we first issued the violation notice and begin their enforcement efforts at that point. So we work with them. We provide them, anytime they contact us to get a copy of the notice or a copy of the certified receipt or anything like that, we happily, you know, comply and give them everything we've, we've got. In addition to all that, we realize that the violation notices generally being mailed to the property owner or the management company and not the tenant. And because they're being mailed out certified mail and they have a lot of intense language in there about violations and everything else that might turn somebody off, you know, it's at a certain point of, you know, when they get to page two or three or four. Separately, if we've issued a violation for flaking paint or defective surface that may be painted, we will separately send by regular mail a completely separate letter. It is one paragraph on the front that just says, we've recently issued a violation that, that deals with flaking paint and it may be a lead hazard. And then on the back, it's split into, in half, half of it giving the landlord's obligations and the other half giving tenants rights. So we call it the Rights and Responsibility Letter. That's, that, that's mailed out both to the property address and addressed to the occupant of the property, as well as any of the addresses we have for the owner, to try and get that information out to both parties and make sure everybody is, is fully aware of what's going on. In addition to the violation side of things, last year, the council passed the rental licensing law. Prior to last year, and Councilman Henry is very familiar with this, we spent a lot of time meeting and going over this. But prior to this year, the only properties required to be licensed were multiple-family dwellings. So those were two apartments and any other use, so, or more. So half of our rental stock was going uninspected unless a tenant complained about some kind of condition. And not a lot of tenants were complaining about conditions. With the passage of the rental licensing law, all properties not only have to be inspected and receive a license, they also have to abate all of their open violation notices. So these three things, it reaches the other half of our housing stock, the one and two family units that were not being inspected unless complaints came in. Part of the licensing requirement, they have to certify that they're in compliance with state lead paint laws. So if they are an affected property, they have to provide us with their registry number and their certification numbers. And that goes, in most cases, digitally into our database so that we can share that with the state. We can refer back to it if there's any question as to whether or not a property is property, properly registered with the state and should have a license to rent in the city. So that, we think in the coming years will help in reducing lead paint as well as improving the quality of housing in the city, rental housing in the city. In addition to those measures within the violation world, we have a code enforcement attorney that works with the Department of House, or Department of Health. When their investigators go out and what Mary Beth kind of explained is, all the steps that they take to try and get the information out there and help get the property into compliance, after a violation notice is issued, if it's not being complied with, those cases now get referred to the Department of Housing. And we would take that case into housing court and do enforcement actions. Our attorney actually kind of works on multiple levels with the Health Department. We will get initial referrals when they are having trouble determining who the owner is or contacting the owner. And so we use our special investigations unit and some other tools that we have to hunt down a good contact number for those property owners that just aren't making contact with the inspectors that are going out from the Health Department. We'll also refer the, review the cases prior to needing litigation, just to make sure at the beginning side, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed, you know, the mailing went out right, the posting went out right, it was issued to the right parties. So that if it gets to the point where it needs to go to court, we're not delayed in any way of having to go back and repost or, or take some kind of other action. And then finally, if they're not complying, we, we take those cases to court. When it first came over, we spent a lot of time just working on the open cases that existed from prior. But so far, right now, we have fourteen active cases in district court. There are twenty-eight cases that don't, are active but don't have a scheduled hearing. So they're being followed up on because they're under order. And we've closed out a hundred and eighty-four cases. So it, it's working really well. And our attorney actually meets with the Health Department inspectors almost a weekly basis, just to go over what's going on, address any issues. So really happy with, with how that's going and the relationship there. And we've always had a, a great relationship. I think if you go back to the beginning of the chart that was first shown in two thousand, two thousand and one, the lead paint inspector, or lead paint attorneys were housed at housing entirely. There was at some point when they, they moved back over to health and now they've returned. But I think Ms. Haller was one of those attorneys way back when and we, we had offices across from each other. As far as permit requirements go, I think it was about four years ago, we instituted an acknowledgement form on our online permits. The federal EPA put in a standard for renovation, repair and painting. And what we ended up doing is, we have, as, when somebody goes to apply online for a permit, they'll get to a page. There's about a, a paragraph of information and some contact information. And it explains to them that they need to make sure if they're disturbing a certain square footage of area within a, a school, a house or childcare center, that they need to comply with the RRP rule. And it provides them with contact information of how to find out more about that. They must acknowledge that they've read that statement. Obviously, we can't make somebody read it, but they have to at least check a box and acknowledge that they've read that statement, that they're aware that this law exists and that there are certain standards that they need to meet should they be disturbing a surface in one of those locations. I'm not aware of anybody else in the state doing that. I know at the time, when I was meeting with the Lead Commission, it took us a little bit of time to actually implement it and they were pushing hard for it, but there was nobody else even talking about doing that. I'm not aware of anybody else in the state doing it. But we put it out there to, you know, further educate the public and particularly contractors and property owners of what they need to do. So that goes out on every one of our permits that are applied for online. And all of our permits are available online except for temporary permits, which wouldn't have anything to do with lead paint. That's fairs and festivals and those kinds of things. And then finally, the last area I just wanted to present on, and the question came up earlier, are demolition protocols. Baltimore City has some nationally recognized demolition protocols. When EBDI was being considered, there was a lot of discussion over demolition. At the time, the Coalition for Lead Paint came forward and what ended up coming out of that is the EBDI standards or the Baltimore demolition protocols. It's referred to in different ways. Other jurisdictions have since adopted it, but Department of Housing adopted that not only in our demolition contracts, but also in the code, most of those recommendations. And the biggest piece there is wetting during demolition. That's proven to be the best way to limit fugitive dust, you know, dust getting outside of the demolition site and spreading through the neighborhood, is to wet, you know, as you're preparing to demo the building during the demolition and during the debris removal. When Project Core came about four years in twenty-sixteen, and we started talking about whole block demolition and an increase above and beyond the demolition that we've ever been capable of doing, we met with Maryland Department of Housing, Community Development and the Maryland Stadium Authority and ironed out what became known as the Project Core protocols for demolition. Those protocols are above what the city law is. It's above our current contracts. And it was at us, you know, and really Commissioner Braverman at the time, pushing to say, this is an opportunity for us to, to step up again, improve the standards. And, and if this pans out the way that we think it might pan out, then we can go back in our contracts and, and improve our contracts and improve city law. With Project Core, they actually require two hoses instead of one. So they have the same kind of wetting protocols, but just making it wetter. They also do, the, the two big things is making it a second hose and also the screening of the site. Both of those, we've just submitted within the last two months, our new contract to go out to bid. Those standards are in that new contract. As for the soil, we currently require the top eighteen inches of soil to be replaced in our contract. The Project Core standards are clean fill in the site and the city's contracts are going out with those new standards of clean fill in the site. So our, our contract is going to step up. And then we've got the, the new building fire and related codes that are being prepared right now. And within that, some of these measures are also going into the code so that all demolitions within the city, both public and private, would be required to have that same kind of wetting standards and screening standards that the state has taken on and that we're taking on. So that covers my half of it. And I would normally stay for this entire hearing, but I would ask to be excused so that I can make my daughter's winter concert. If I have any questions, I'm, I'm here to, to answer those. And if anything comes up, Stephanie and Alice can certainly let me know. But I'd, I'd rather make the concert than pay for therapy for the rest of my life.
Yes, that's fine. I did have a question, but I'll, I'll throw it to you.
No, I, I'm, I'm good for the question.
The immediate question I had was around, so you mentioned the standards. The standards apply to private contractors?
Our, our code requires wetting during the demolition. We require a pre-meeting where we go over how to perform the demolition. So that occurs well before they set up the site. They're required to follow the soil erosion control measures, which has skirting and, and other stuff to keep what's on the site, on the site. And then the day of the demo, they're required to have a, a meeting with our inspectors. So we are on site before they start to make sure the hoses are there, the fire hydrant works, you know, everything is set up the proper way. So those standards exist. And we can require them to bring in additional hoses if they're doing a particularly large building or something. doing a particularly large building or something, you know, that we think is going to create more dust than normal. What we're looking to increase is just to have two hoses on-site, to have better screening and fill requirements.
So the inspectors are there for the full demolition?
They're not there for the full demolition, they're just there for the start.
Yeah, and that's, I think, my concern, because in my tenure, I have a few calls, and I think you've helped me navigate them, around concerns, site control, following demolitions. And so that's where that question came from. Are there capacity issues? What are the issues as to why an inspector isn't there for the demolition, for the duration of the demolition?
Yeah, we don't have the staff to man, we have three demolition inspectors that do our demolitions, and then we use the building inspector staff there for the private demolitions that occur. And so that's, those are the same people that would go out and do the inspections for your framing on a property, or building a deck, or putting a new roof on, or your use and occupancy. So we wouldn't, we don't have the capacity to have somebody sitting there on-site for the whole time.
To do that, how many inspectors would you need?
I'd have to run some numbers, but it would be an enormous.
I think it'd be helpful to know.
Okay, we can pull how many private demolitions occurred in the city. I mean, I can tell you that last fiscal year, we did seven hundred and twenty demolitions between the city and the state. And our demolition, our three demolition inspectors are out at those sites every day checking on them, but they're not there all day, in most cases.
Counselor Neighbors. Quick question, because I respect the concert.
Thank you.
Do you have a rough sense of how much it costs a contractor to do the wetting on, just say, like, an average rowhouse demolition?
No.
And the reason I ask-
Where the cost comes in really is not so much in the water bill, or the hose, or the equipment. Where it ends up coming in is the tipping fees when they're disposing of the debris, because everything that's wet is heavier. And if they're disposing of it wet, they're paying more.
The reason I ask is, I've had a couple instances over the years where we get complaints from a neighbor that a house is being demolished and the contractor isn't wetting it. And in all those cases, HCD has been very responsive, and they've immediately sent someone out and done a stop work order and gotten them to do it. I was just trying to get a sense of, you know, what gets a contractor, what encourages a contractor to try to avoid doing that? Is it that the chance is that they might actually be paying more than the fine? If they've, like, if they can get away with demoing most of the house before an inspector catches them, is it going to save them more than the thousand-dollar fine, or something like that?
So for most traditional, like, rowhouse demolitions or single-family houses, the fine's going to outweigh anything, any savings they would have. If we, and one example is the-
Sorry, what is the fine?
Well, so if we catch them doing it, we would stop the job. So they would have to stop that day until they could bring the property into compliance. So that costs them money. It would be a five-hundred-dollar citation, environmental control citation, for work outside the scope of the permit, and then a thousand-dollar surcharge placed on the property. So they're looking at fifteen-hundred dollars unless they can somehow get that thousand dollars reduced, or the five-hundred reduced, in requesting an administrative hearing. And that usually, in a rowhouse, that's going to eat up probably all their profits. And so it is beneficial to them to follow the code and know the code. I was going to say that we had the two demos over by the mill that got a lot of press about six months ago because of the historic nature of the buildings, and in that, they had the permits to do the job, they actually called for the first-day inspection originally when they took down the surrounding area, but they, when they came back to take down the additional two buildings, they did not call for the first-day inspection, and they didn't, they were wetting some, but they didn't have sufficient water there for the size of the job. And in that case, it was two separate properties next door to each other, they got the five-hundred-dollar citation, the thousand-dollar surcharge, we stopped the job. It ended up being stopped for several days before the owner got all his permits in line, called for the inspection, showed us they had the right water, and could resume clearing the site. So when, you know, when we catch it, we jump on it. And the other thing is, in order to perform demolitions in the city, you have to be a licensed demo contractor. That's an annual requirement. So we do have the ability to suspend or revoke somebody if there are habitual problems.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I did have a follow-up for Ms. Delamos. I'm sorry. I'll work on it, I will. So he mentioned something, I didn't want to slow him down, that contractors are able to request a hearing with the Environmental Control Board. Could, as a follow-up item, could we get the number of hearings requested for this particular type of violation in the last two fiscal years? I'm just curious on that.
Can I, I have a couple of questions, too, that I don't, while you're writing down questions for Jason Hessler. When, Alice, it'll just be a minute, I'm not waiting for an answer. The question is, sorry. When he said that, there was a point where Mr. Hessler said, and then after that, the job, it's closed. He was talking about, he was back with the lead paint and the law, his department's working with it, and then he said, after that, it's closed. What is his version of closed? What does that mean? I'm getting very sensitive to that because of three-one-one, closing things, that it doesn't mean close. But I just wondered what he meant about close, because he's representing the legal component at that point of what's being done about the lead paint.
Counselwoman, I can address that if you like. So the closed cases, of the one hundred and eighty-four, one hundred and fifty-six of which the violation was abated, eight of which there was a vacant building notice issued, and two of which the building was demolished, five of which were dismissed to allow the owner to apply for financial assistance. And another instance would be where the property was transferred to a third party per agreement, and there was a judgment-proof property now unoccupied, and the owner is financially unable to abate, or a child is no longer present. So those are some of the other reasons why a case would be closed.
Thank you, that's great. Can we get a copy of that list?
Certainly.
And then the other question, so you can take that question off the list, and the other question is simply this, I misunderstood and would like to understand whether the new standard for site, sites being developed, is eighteen-inch surface on top of the landfill, or total landfill, total new landfill? In other words, what are the new standards on which you can develop a property vis-à-vis a lot of things, including the potential of lead in the ground? So therefore, is the solution, the current solution, going down twelve or eighteen inches? I think he said eighteen. And refilling with clean dirt? Or is it totally clean dirt surface, ground underneath? Which is it? Because somehow I came away wondering whether it was the lid, or the whole thing further down, the ground further down from what was the surface? Thank you. I'm sorry.
And I want to, before you go, I want to note that we've been joined by Dominic McKinley from the Council President's office. All right, go for it.
Excellent. Hi, my name is Alice Kennedy. I'm deputy commissioner with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the Division of Home Ownership and Housing Preservation. And I'm here tonight, thank you, Chairperson Burnett, and members of the council, and the general public, as well as a number of our partners, community partners, as well as agency partners, to talk about the issue of lead poisoning within the city of Baltimore. This definitely is, I think, and I don't think I'd be alone in saying, that lead poisoning and preventing lead poisoning is one of the most pressing public health issues that we face as a city, given historic levels of lead that we've had, the nature of our housing stock, and kind of the housing deterioration of housing stock, and where we see that moving in the future. My division that I oversee, one of the programs within that division is the Lead Hazard Reduction Program. So that division, that program moved into my division from the Health Department in about two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. And we, that change happened at that time because of the nature of the construction program and the interconnection between Lead Hazard Reduction Program, our Weatherization Program, and our Office of Rehabilitation Services Program, so that all three of those construction programs could kind of work together to look at how to best leverage all the different pots of funding that we have, and break down some of those silos to try to create as many outcomes that we can for the residents of the city of Baltimore. The majority of our funding for the Lead Hazard Reduction Program comes through grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We have been lucky enough to have our grant proposals approved and selected as grant recipients going back to two thousand and twelve. They are competitive, highly competitive grants, and it is not a guarantee that even with the need that is stated within the city of Baltimore, that when the cycles of funding come up through the federal government and that Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA, is put out, there is no guarantee that while we put in an application, that that application will be selected for funding. But we have been lucky enough to have funding and have been selected for the last four grant cycles, going back to two thousand and twelve. Received approximately two-point-nine million in two thousand and twelve, which allowed us to do two-hundred-and-ten units. In two thousand and fifteen, there was an additional three-point-seven million that allowed us, the goal was two-hundred-and-thirty units, we exceeded that goal and got close to two-fifty with that. We have a current funding cycle that is actually starting right now. It was awarded in two thousand and eighteen, but it's starting at this time, and that is four-point-one million dollars total, which will put us at the, around the two-hundred-and-fifty unit production over the next three years. And then last year, it was very unusual for HUD to put out a opportunity for what they are calling High-Impact Neighborhood Funding Opportunity, which was for seven jurisdictions across the country total. Once again, competitive process to apply for this, where you would put together, the award would be up to nine-point-seven million dollars, and you had to focus on four consecutive, four contiguous census tracts within your jurisdiction that met high thresholds of certain metrics that HUD put forth. So we were actually very lucky, we went for the opportunity, and we were awarded that just this past fall. So starting January second, we'll start into a five-year funding cycle for HUD over that time period, which will be nine-point-seven million dollars, over four contiguous census tracts that fit actually a sliver coming down through Sandtown, Winchester, and then kind of down over and into Carrollton Ridge over the next five years. And we anticipate doing five-hundred units alone in that area with that funding. Now, it should be noted that the nine-point-seven million dollars and the four-point-one million-dollar award from HUD also includes six-hundred-thousand dollars to be used specifically for healthy homes interventions. This is one of the combinations where our partners at Green and Healthy Homes Initiative and Ruth Ann Norton have been driving this concept, and it's one of the concepts, too, behind our Weatherization Program since about two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine, which is when we're in a property, what can we do to address as many healthy home issues as well? So not just looking at the lead hazard reduction, but also looking at what we can do in the home for asthma reduction or other instances along those lines, to kind of help create the healthiest home environment that we can for those families. The program itself, the primary focus is on homes where there are children under the age of six, a pregnant female, or a qualifying visiting child. So we do actually have a number of residents and clients that we've assisted, where it may be an aunt or a grandmother, that this is their home, but they have children under the age of six that hit the thresholds to have, be the thresholds that's set forth by HUD, to have it be a qualifying child, to be able to have them do, apply to our program, and us to provide the lead reduction services for them. We can use HUD funding for both owner-occupied and tenant properties. Given the nature of the need in the city of Baltimore, our primary focus has been owner-occupied properties. And owner-occupied properties with also violation notices and elevated blood levels that come through, through the referrals that we get in partnership with the Health Department. So the demand and need has been significant, because we've not only met all of the targets through all of the grant funding, in most instances, we've exceeded the targets in the grant funding set forth by HUD for the number of units, and still knowing that there are more owner-occupied properties out there, and way more tenant-occupied properties out there within the city of Baltimore, that we just haven't been able to get to and to address with these issues. The other key piece that I'd like to bring up is that our program, it's the Lead Hazard Reduction Program. At the end of the day, our program and per HUD regulations creates lead-safe homes. It does not create lead-free homes. And by creating lead-safe homes, we're essentially eliminating the hazards to the best of our ability through approved techniques such as encapsulation, some removal of items, et cetera, to reduce the risks of lead paint within the property. In order to create lead-free homes, the cost of that would be significantly greater than the cost of what we're even seeing with doing the lead-safe home interventions and interim control measures for lead hazard reduction. So on average, we're spending around twelve to thirteen thousand dollars per unit to create the lead safe. And there are times when they definitely come across the desk where we're hitting the maximum of a HUD investment in a property of twenty thousand dollars, and we leverage that with other funding as well. So sometimes we may see a property come in at thirty, twenty, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars' worth of work to create that lead-safe property. We have one recently, in the last two years, that came across where the, it was a larger single-family detached home in northeast Baltimore, and the cost of creating a lead-safe home for that family would have been a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And unfortunately, because of the HUD stipulations, we cannot utilize HUD money to only do a portion of the work that is necessary in that home. If the lead risk assessment comes back and states that these are all the areas of a home where we're seeing the lead paint, and whether or not that would be on basement walls, or exterior soffits, exterior window trim- walls or exterior soffits, exterior window trim, porch ceilings, porch floors, as well as interior trim, then we cannot just do a partial job. So unfortunately, that home, because of the cost, we were not able to, we're still trying to figure out how to put different funding sources together to help that family, but because of the high cost of that, we haven't been able to serve them just yet. But it gives you a little bit of ideas into some of the barriers that we face when we get some of the cases that come into us and the difficult nature of that. One of the other funding sources that we utilize for the Lead Hazard Reduction Program is that we are an administrator of state lead hazard reduction funding. So through the State Department of Housing and Community Development, through their Special Loans Program, we administer lead hazard reduction funding on behalf of the state. We do the underwriting for those, we do the intake, and that is the funding that we leverage with the HUD money. So typically, when we're doing a case, we have HUD money and we have state money, and then often, we also will have some of the limited housing rehabilitation funds from our city's capital budget that go in to help fill some of the small gaps that may be necessary in order to even get a case to the ability to receive those funding sources. Because just like you've heard me testify in front of council before, as, in terms of the weatherization program, if a home has a leaking roof, if a home has water in the basement, if a home has structural repairs or structural deficiencies, if the home has a, a number of those problems, if not one, but often we see a number, we will not be able to also utilize our lead funding on that property until we've figured out a way to help that homeowner replace the roof, deal with the water infiltration. We hope that if there's mold or mildew or some other, that we can use Healthy Homes money and leverage that into that. But we still need, and there is a great need of, you know, increasing funding available to help fill those gaps for families, especially owner-occupied properties where there are additional repairs needed on the property outside of lead hazard reduction in order to allow us to utilize the other funding sources. The, our program, the Lead Hazard Reduction Program, does a number of things, from outreach and education. We have outreach coordinators that are out at health fairs, community organizations. They will go door-to-door and knock on doors, they go to grocery stores, they kind of go wherever they can to help find people to take applications. The state requirements for that funding is pretty rigorous in terms of the amount of paperwork and documentation that we have to collect from income verification, as well as P&amp;J statements. The state funding comes with some restriction on it as it applies to liens or judgments that that homeowner may have. So we sometimes can hit a stumbling block with utilizing some of the state funding, but I've been working with them to try to take away some of those barriers so that, since these are grants and not loans, trying to shift policy at the state level so that they are not underwritten like loans, but evaluated as it would be evaluated for grant funding, because I think that's important, and that would be an important place for any additional assistance as well. A number of our, we also have our contractors that do the work, which are all lead-certified contractors that are within a blanket, master blanket contract with the city. So we have a rotating pool of contractors that are assigned the work. We relocate families out of the home, whether or not into a hotel or with family members during the time that the work is happening. And we also do additional testing. Testing is required for any of the children under the age of six and the visiting children in order for us to do the case as well. We wouldn't be able to do this work and hit the numbers that we're able to hit without the partners that we have at the table. I have staff members that are regularly, attend the monthly Maryland Lead Poisoning Prevention Commission meetings that occur monthly, and that is a commission that is hosted out of the Maryland Department of Environment, as Deputy Commissioner Holler said before, in terms of the state being kind of the leading regulatory component around lead. And then also, in the city's Health Department, we partner with them on all of our HUD grants to also assist with intake, education, outreach, and some of that case management as it relates to the families. And the Green and Healthy Homes Initiative has been a significant partner in terms of supporting different advocacy work at the state level, advocacy work at the local level. They are one of our contractors under the blanket Lead Hazard Reduction Contractors. So they are a licensed contractor within the city and perform work, and they also assist us. They are specialized in doing kind of the post-remediation, post-mitigation education work that we do with families to try to set them up for success after we've completed the intervention, which is kind of some of those things too that the Health Department talked about, bringing cleaning supplies, how to maintain the work that was done, how to continue to limit exposure to lead within the home for your children, whether or not that'd be also watching to see coming in from outside, taking off shoes in the home, wipe, you know, doing consistent wiping of all flat surfaces, using a HEPA vacuum and all those other great tips that exist. So unfortunately, I often don't like to be the person that sometimes stands up and says, "We need more money," because it often seems that a lot of times, you know, it's one of those things where I stand up often and say, "Well, we could use more money," which we can't. I mean, the need is great and the cost is great, but when you look at the, I don't want to, it sounds somewhat insensitive when you're talking about it this way in terms of the return on investment, when we're talking about a child's life and their future growth within, within our city and under our care with their parents, I think that that's immeasurable when we look at that. And no level of blood, no level of lead in the blood of a child is safe. So while we talk about, you know, limits of five and we talk about limits of 10, yes, those are triggering marks for higher levels of intervention, but science has definitely proven that no level and no exposure is safe for our children. So we should try to do everything we can to help make that so that they're safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
It, at one point, you made a reference to P&amp;J statements?
Yes, judgment. Now I'm forgetting what the P is on that one. So it's basically, we pull to look at if there's any public liens or judgments.
Okay, gotcha, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. You answered all the questions I had here, so. Okay, Bill Peach.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Bill Peach. I'm the Senior Manager for Administrative Services for the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. I appreciate being able to speak with you all a little bit about the Housing Authority and to give you a little bit of knowledge about what we do as far as lead issues and how we deal with, with them. The Housing Authority has approximately 7,000 dwelling units spread throughout the city of Baltimore. HABC has been a strong proponent and a strong partner, as you heard earlier, with the Health Department and Maryland Department of the Environment and the city code enforcement folks, and also, we've all tried to work together to do what's right. All HABC dwelling units are lead-tested and certified by private lead-testing companies prior to being leased to a tenant. All Housing Authority Baltimore City dwelling units are registered annually with the Department of, the Maryland Department of the Environment. Lead inspections are performed prior to changes in occupancy as well. All tenants are provided with a copy of lead-risk educational materials when they are initially leased, and also at least every two years, just to keep them informed. Those, those materials include the Environmental Protection Agency pamphlet, which is entitled Protect Your Family From Lead In Your Home, and the Maryland Department of the Environment pamphlet, which is entitled Notice Of Tenant Rights. And that one's really important because that packet includes a form for notice of defect or notice of elevated blood level, which is the triggering document for at least the Housing Authority to take prompt action. HABC meets the risk-reduction standard by ensuring all units pass an inspection for lead-contaminated dust. It's performed by an MDE-accredited inspection contractor, and that's prior to every change in occupancy. Passing requires not only it to be free from lead dust, but also it has to pass a visual inspection for defective paint, both on the interior and the exterior. Upon receiving notice of, a notice of defect or an elevated blood level, the Housing Authority diligently meets what's called the Modified Risk Reduction Standard within the 30-day requirement that's mandated by the state. This can include having the tenants leave the unit while minor work is being done, or it can also include moving them to a certified lead-free unit, so that we can complete the work safely without them being exposed to any negative factors there. Then once it's dust-tested and is given an MDE certificate, then they're allowed to move back in. HABC also has all of its maintenance employees, supervisors, managers, trained and certified by an MDE-certified training contractor, so that every employee knows exactly what lead-safe work practices have to be employed. Close monitoring is also done on the certification of our employees to ensure that, that their certification does not expire, so we make sure that they're retrained, I believe it's every three years. HABC has an average unit turnover that is, ranges from 65 to 70 units a month. These units are routinely inspected, repaired, and lead-certified prior to being occupied with new tenants. So an annual inspection cost to Housing Authority for such testing can average about $30,000 a month, but it's, it's something that's very critical to ensuring that we have a lead-safe environment. One of the, the key things that I'd like to stress is with that MDE form where we have the notice of, notice of defect, it's really important that residents understand that they're not to be intimidated not to turn those things in, because it's, it's critical to them, their children, to, to do that. And very often, we find that they just don't report defective paint or anything. Fortunately, we have inspections done on the units, so very often we'll catch it, but it would be much better if the, the tenants turned in those forms as soon as they see a notice of, a defect and notify us of it. So that's kind of in a nutshell, you know, where the Housing Authority is with dealing with lead issues. Any questions?
Councilman Clark?
Mr. Peach, I thought all public housing units were lead-free.
No.
I don't know what made me think that, but I'm...
I mean, they're, they're...
Devastated to hear that's not the case.
A lot of them are, a lot of them are lead-free. For instance, Cherry Hill Homes has over 1,000 units, and that's a lead-free development.
That's lead, we're not talking lead-safe, we're talking lead-free.
That's lead-free, right.
So, so, public housing has all the senior citizen high-rises, right?
I'm sorry.
When you, the Housing Authority of Baltimore City is in charge of all the senior citizen high-rise buildings, the, the, you know...
Well, actually, no. We, we don't have any more high-rise buildings left. They've been...
Oh, that's right. You gave, you sold them to the...
They were entered into the program called RAD, the RAD program.
You, you did the RAD program, and you did it with all of them now?
Yes, yes. So all the high-rises are gone now.
Okay, so, but, but, were they required when they turned over to be lead-free?
A lot of, a lot of them, some of them were lead-free.
Well, were they required as part of the RAD process to be made lead-free in the conversion, since they were all going to rehab them anyway, the buildings?
I, I don't know what the requirements are.
Could you find out?
Sure.
I mean, it's a little after the fact, but I, I don't have any anymore. So I wasn't on top of that the way I should have been, but I'd like to know that.
Okay.
Because I, I thought that somehow, public housing units were all lead-free. Now, I don't know what made me believe that, but it's not true, right?
I, I could not say they're all lead-free. There, there are instances where there are metal lentils, door lentils and window lentils that are in buildings, that were brick buildings that were built years ago, and they had factory-appplied lead primer on them, which is pretty much intact. It doesn't normally flake or anything, but nevertheless, it is there. And in a lot of cases, we've encapsulated, you know, those lentils.
All right, so I'd like, then, this is not the place to do it, but let me, this is the place to ask for it. You're, you're demolishing and rebuilding big time down the street. I'm presuming you're rebuilding all lead-free housing units?
Yes, but new, new developments are, are...
All new developments?
Yes.
In public housing are lead-free?
New developments, yes.
So that is. So, I would be very grateful if you would provide to this committee the public housing units that are under the control of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, and how many of them are currently lead-free?
Okay.
For starters.
I'll, I'll get that information.
I would say it would be helpful to know the full, like, how many units there are and how many units are lead-free.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Yeah, so out of how many, where?
Okay, I'll get you that information.
That's what we're here for.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And I'm sorry to all the people that I said public housing units are lead-free. I thought I was telling the truth. It wasn't you who told me wrong. It was years ago.
So we have Wes Stewart and Jamal Lewis from Green and Healthy Homes Initiatives.
Not Wes Stewart, I don't recall, but I'm not Wes Stewart.
I'm Andrea Brown, I'm with Green and Healthy Homes.
Perfect, thank you.
First of all, thank you so much. Wes Stewart will be with us.
Perfect, yeah, I was looking at the sign.
As is Jamal Lewis.
And before you go, I want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilman Cohen from the first district, hiding in the back. All right, please.
Okay, ready?
Who, who are we talking to?
Okay, good. So I am Andrea Brown, I'm the Vice President of Maryland Programs for Green and Healthy Homes Initiatives. And so it's exciting to see many of the partners that we work with here. I am joined by my colleagues Wes Stewart and Jamal Lewis. And so we are sort of going to tag-team just, just a bit. Most of you have heard our name mentioned throughout. Somebody said GHHI, somebody else has said Green and Healthy Homes. And so we have a long history of really addressing the toxic legacy of lead poisoning in the city, and we've not stopped, and we don't intend to do so. And so things that you already know, decades after ending lead and paint and gas, it still is the, a huge threat, an environmental threat to our children and our families in Baltimore and across the nation. And again, I'm not telling you anything that you don't know, but I think it bears repeating as we talk about the work that we do. We talk at length about the decrease in the number of children in Maryland with, with elevated blood levels, and that is certainly encouraging, but it's certainly not enough. And there's, there was a study last year that talked about, still over, in 2018, over 700 children still had elevated blood levels, five or above. And so I ask you today, what about the 700? Do we not resource them? What about the 700-plus? And so today, we're going to talk a little bit about how we see that, the recommendations that we can put before this committee, and what we need to... and what we need to do as we strengthen our partnerships with colleagues across the state and across the country. And so, having said that, Wes?
Thanks, Andrea. And the challenge we face here today, again, we have many of the leaders here who worked on legislation. We thank you again for your support for the Landlord Licencings Bill, which put in place some really key benchmarks for us to achieve. We've made that progress with the work of the Department of Environment from the state, health and housing, city housing and health. But we're actually at a challenge now of getting down to those areas in housing that we have not addressed. So, we have a rental law that's critical, the Maryland Reduction of Lead Risk in Housing that the state is enforcing with city support. We have an EPA renovation rule that we need to make sure is enforced, lead-safe demolition practices, housing codes where there's shipping paint. But we're talking about the issue now of down to this number of children. We have the ability to, as Councilwoman Clark mentioned, how are we case-managing? How are we responding to those EVLs? We are at a level now where we actually can manage that and make sure that we're properly following up, that we're going in and remedying those homes, that we have strong lead violation enforcement, and we have those systems in place. We have to make sure they work. But fundamentally, we appreciate the funding from HUD. We appreciate that support. But we have to scale up to the problem that we face. We still have hundreds of thousands of units that have lead hazards in there. And so, what we're asking for is, in addition to the funding, we get minimal funding, we get some support from the state, several million dollars a year from HUD. We want to establish a Baltimore Lead Fund. So, we want this, we have a number of cities, from Jersey City to Cleveland to Detroit to Charlotte, they're developing their own lead bonds or lead funds. We want to have some creative solutions to what we're doing here, and we need your support to be able to do that. But we'd like to establish at least a $15 million lead fund so we have more flexible funding that we scale up to to address this problem. We have support now coming from the Healthy Homes for Healthy Kids program. We work with the Department of Health at the state level. We worked with the Department of Housing. We now have Medicaid chip dollars that are coming in to start paying for, we need to make sure we're maximizing that. There's actually a problem now. We don't have enough match funding to actually access as much as we could. But we have chip funding paying for testing and remediation in homes of kids on Medicaid who have lead levels. Those are the kind of solutions that we need. But we need stronger philanthropic support. We need to develop, again, a bond system that reaches the level of the need. But we also have the tremendous ability to develop workforce development programs, to have lead prevention boot camps, to have our MBEs, to have our residents be trained up. There's a low bar, actually, to be able to become a lead worker, lead supervisor. It's not an extensive amount of training. It's not a large capital. We also need to invest in the residents in our communities to be able to address this need. We have a contractor capacity issue. We have all those resources in here. So, we'd really like to marry that up with not only this lead fund, but how do we take advantage of this opportunity to give green jobs training and real jobs? Not just trainings and hurry up and wait, but having that workforce development component where our residents are having entrepreneurial opportunities to become assessors and workers. So, some of those tools are here to combine all these things. Again, we have a very broad collaborative, great cooperation with city and state. But the reality is, to get where we want to go, we have to address all those sources, from soil and demolition to paint and housing to changing our standards for lead and water for residential homes, lead and water in schools. We have outdated standards in terms of parts per billion for lead and water, in terms of lead service lines. Lead and water in our schools, we still have not addressed. So, a number of pieces where we really have to come together with greater creative solutions to get private sector investment as well. So, again, we appreciate your support. We have consistency, but we also have to take it to scale to the problem. And one other piece there is also, we talked about testing, and Jamal Lewis from office is going to give you some perspective about where we are and what we need to do to also identify kids better so we can actually deploy the resources that are there. So, again, we appreciate your support and want to really look at those new innovative solutions to scale this issue.
Thank you, and I have a copy of our testimony here.
Perfect. I was going to ask that. Thank you.
So, in addition to what my colleagues Andrea and Wes have said, you know, Baltimore, we do have a really powerful partnership when it comes to lead poisoning prevention, but we still have a long way to go. Evidence from the most recent MDE report suggests that Baltimore City is testing about 50% of the kids in Baltimore City, 50% of the kids under, at age 1 and 2. But kids under the age of 6, only 24%, about 24% are being tested. And both of those numbers are down from historic levels, which shows that we aren't testing the way that we used to, but we also aren't getting to 100%. So, that tells us that we don't really know. As much progress as we've made, we don't really know where some of the problem areas are when only half or less than a quarter of the kids under the age of 6 are being tested. And so, that really requires partnerships with childcare centers, partnerships with providers, managed care organizations, the education sector, to really make sure that we are really hitting and testing all the kids, because it's universal testing. So, we really know exactly how we're doing when it comes to lead poisoning prevention. So, I'll leave it at that, yeah.
Councilman Hammer?
Ooh, let's see. Okay, so maybe I should have asked this question earlier when we were talking about the mandatory testing. So, I feel silly saying this, but if all kids have to be tested, but only a quarter of them are being tested, why is that? I mean, if you have to show that you were tested to get into school, is what's happening that kids aren't being tested until they have to go to school?
It's a variety of things. And I'll let my colleagues also weigh in on that. But when it comes to the mandatory requirement, we found it difficult to enforce the testing when it comes to providers. And so, that's one barrier. The second is, so the doctors, yeah.
You mean the doctors don't test kids?
Right. So, there's a requirement for all physicians that work under the Medicaid program for them to test. And so, there's actual monetary or fiscal incentives, yeah, for them to test. But when it comes to providers that aren't administering or are not under the Medicaid program, then there's less of an incentive for them to test. Is there a question there?
Well, so they're getting, so that means the poorer the kids are, I guess financially as part of their family, the better chance they have to be tested? Do we know?
But it means, so it sounds like there's going to be a, there's a gap. There's a socioeconomic gap where if you're not well-off enough to be in lead-safe housing in the first place, but you're not so income-challenged that you've already got Medicaid and you're going, okay. So, somewhere in between, that's the 75% of the kids?
That's a portion of it, and so that's one barrier. The other barrier is actually, right, in order to, I think there should be a better enforcement of this mandatory testing before kids are able to enter school. I think this is anecdotally, but we found that schools aren't necessarily going to keep children out of school because they aren't receiving a lead test.
Okay, so they're not going to keep the, so when you get to school, which, by the way, school starts pretty early now.
Right.
You know, we've got pre-K, I think, for every, yeah, that's for four-year-olds. So, to get into the pre-K, you have to show that you've been tested.
Right.
And even if they don't keep you out because you haven't been tested, does the school system not tell somebody that these four-year-olds showed up trying to go to pre-K and they haven't been tested? Does the school system tell any of the partners this?
I'd like to address it. Yolanda Wilton, Baltimore City Health Department, Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program. I'm the case manager supervisor. I think the breakdown is the providers are zooming on the law of the child being tested between the ages of 1 and 2. Based on the reading or the lead level of that child, the providers don't think that it's no longer important. But the message that we've been trying to stress to the providers, head starts, healthy starts, that even if the child has had a test by 1 and 2, that it is very important to get the child tested at least once a year until they turn 6 years old because the circumstances and environments can change.
But that's not the law.
That's not the law now.
No, it's not the law, but, yeah, but we relay that information that it is important to get the children tested.
And I'd just like to add Greg Cilio, Assistant Commissioner. We're also working right now as part of this larger lead campaign that we launched with our Commissioner Dr. Drazza and the mayor, is really about also talking to providers. We talked about earlier, Mary Beth mentioned the toolkit that we're putting out. But one of the big things we're finding is we're engaging with federally qualified health centers when we're engaging with PCPs, and we know the pediatric association's here, which we appreciate, is there are lots of barriers even just in the office. So, what's happening is, a child will be in the office, and some offices don't have what we have, which is the point-of-care testing. The Health Department can do that, but not all offices have it. So, because of that, they actually need a venous test, meaning an actual stick to draw blood from a vein. So, they're having to go to a lab or, in some cases, go to a different part of the building, and we're losing a lot of kids that way. You know, maybe they wait in the waiting room for their doctor for an hour, and then they say, well, take the slip and go down the hall and go wait there for another hour. And they're like, oh, I'm not going to do that, and they leave. So, a lot of what we're doing right now is around technical assistance and trying to work with providers to see what can we do to reduce those barriers? How can we get point-of-care testing there? Quick finger prick gives us the information we need. And then, if the venous test is required, then normally, parents, once they realize there's an urgent issue, then they address it. But there's a lot of other barriers, and that's what we're all working together as partners with GHHI and others to see what can we do to get those barriers broken down and help to get as many kids tested as possible.
Right, so it's really a multi-pronged issue.
Yeah, but, well, if it's a real emergency, these children are going to some kind of school, most of them, at some point. If nothing else happens, they're going to walk into a school with somebody, their mom, whatever, and there they are. So, why don't we test kids in their schools where they go?
On occasion, I do have a pleasure of speaking to certain individuals within certain schools that they've noticed that a child has had an initial lead test and hasn't had an updated one. So, I do work with them to try to get that child tested. And a lot of the parents do call into our office wanting to have the child tested. We're currently working with immunizations clinic a couple of times a month, and we let them know, and it's on the website as well, where they can come and get their child tested for lead.
Thank you.
I'm trying to think back to when my kids were 1 and 2. And sometimes the memory gets fuzzy going back. Could we require hospitals to track the kids that are born in their hospital and send a notice, like on the first and second birthday, saying, yeah, congratulations to blah, blah, blah. She, he is now 1 or 2. State law requires that you go get your child tested for, you know, their lead levels. At this point, please make certain that you show this to your doctor so that they know that this is supposed to be done. Could, I mean...
So, you'd actually be surprised. A lot of that stuff already happens. So, the managed care organizations, especially the Medicaid kids, which is a lot of the population, obviously, it's most concerning. Managed care organizations are actually out there. And we said, there even, I think GHHI team mentioned, a member of their team mentioned the idea of incentives. I mean, they're like, for lack of a better term, bribing people, you know, with gift cards and things to say, please, go get your kid tested, and we'll give you this incentive. Unfortunately, it requires that much. They have managed care organizations, I think it's AmeriGroup, that actually sends people to their house. You know, they have a provider that goes out, knocks on their door to get the kids tested. Yeah, so notices are going out. We're actually about to do a mailing through the managed care organizations from the Health Commissioner herself, talking to parents, saying, as the Health Commissioner, I'm imploring you to go get your kid tested. So, that is something that managed care organizations are partnering with us on now to do a mailing. So, it's not that they don't know, you know, but some people are hard to reach, so that's part of it as well.
It's hard to, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, can I? You know, it's hard to get around if you don't have a car. It's hard enough when you do. And labs, whoa, that's like a day of your life, to find them, to figure out how to register with the machines they use, and then to get a ticket from one of those machines and wait. And I'm just saying, I don't mind doing it for me, but if I have a crying child with me, or more likely, three children with me, I can't sit there and hope for the best. I just, I, it's hard. So, the idea of door-to-door, or the idea of having schools really advertise, hey, physicians, come on in and help us test children, you know, on this day, could you please help us with children who haven't yet been tested? And why not, you know? So, use the schools, and I know you're doing that.
Yeah, so, and just to say, I mean, it is up to six years of age. We certainly do want to continue to see kids get tested. The reason why it's 1 and 2 is because those are the critical developmental ages, right? So, right, so I mean, but even in terms of development, how it's going to have, it has the biggest impact during those years. So, once you get to really school age, it's less, it still is a priority, but it's less of a priority than the 1 and 2. And unfortunately, there's not many, there's no 1 and 2-year-olds in school per se, but they are in childcare. And that's why we are working with MSDE specifically on childcare centers to make sure that if they are being enrolled, they're supposed to have those records. But we're finding in our conversations with those childcare providers, that's not always the case. So, we're working with MSDE to make sure that that regulation is adhered to.
And so, the message there is some of our system's in place, but they're also available after the child is most at risk. And so, we've got to solve for that. We also wanted you to be aware that testing half of our kids who are the most at risk, we still have work to do there. The last piece we want to make sure is that, you raised a really important point, which is, when a child is born, we need to develop a system where we're actually following them and actually testing their home and not testing the child to see if they're poisoned. We need to have a system in place where, when kids are born at 1 and 2, we're making sure their homes are tested and we're mediating versus a system where we're relying on blood testing to find. Yep, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe they could come and clean it, too.
Thank you. Alex is laughing because she knows she's going to get stuck doing it.
Dr. Lawrence Brown?
Hello, my name is Lawrence Brown. I'm an Associate Professor at Morgan State University in the School of Community Health and Policy. I want to mention that we haven't discussed probably what should have been discussed upfront by our Health Department. Actually, before I do that, thank you, Councilmember Burnett, for holding this hearing. This is very important. And thank you, councilmembers, for being here. What we should have mentioned upfront is that there's a racial disparity in lead poisoning. Black babies and children in Baltimore City are at a disproportionate risk for toxic lead exposure. Toxic lead in Baltimore is a root cause of crises in our schools in terms of academic achievement and in our streets in terms of violence. Toxic lead robs human beings of brain power and the ability to focus. Many folks know in this room that toxic lead is correlated with ADD and ADHD. You can't learn when you can't focus, and lead causes and elevates that risk. Hello, my name is Lawrence Brown. I am an Associate Professor at Morgan State University in the School of Community Health and Policy. I want to mention that we haven't discussed probably what should have been discussed upfront by our Health Department. Actually, before I do that, thank you Councilmember Burnett for holding this hearing. This is very important. Thank you, Councilmembers, for being here. What we should have mentioned upfront is that there's a racial disparity in lead poisoning. Black babies and children in Baltimore City are at a disproportionate risk for toxic lead exposure. Toxic lead in Baltimore is a root cause of crises in our schools in terms of academic achievement and in our streets in terms of violence. Toxic lead robs human beings of brain power and the ability to focus. Many folks know in this room that toxic lead is correlated with ADD and ADHD. You can't learn when you can't focus, and lead causes and elevates that risk. I don't think we've spent enough time talking about the impacts of lead, even at low levels, two to three micrograms per deciliter of lead. Even at low levels, toxic lead exposure causes damage to the executive reasoning portion of the brain. People can't make the type of sharp, critical decisions when that portion of the brain is damaged. It also causes behavioral difficulties. It elevates issues with impulsivity and aggression, which means, of course, that it bleeds over into elevated levels of violence, and it's also correlated and causes increased odds of mental health issues such as panic disorder and depression. Due to these devastating effects, toxic lead exposure is a large contributor to the crime and violence occurring in our city. A 2019 study in Milwaukee, another hyper segregated city in this country, found that high levels of lead in children's blood under the age of five was associated with higher levels of firearm violence for both perpetrators and victims. And so if we're serious in this city, and that's why I wish the Police Department was here, that's why I wish folks with our schools was here, I know Councilmember Cohen was here earlier, this issue bleeds across, it's not just a health issue. We say in health often that health is in all policy. Well, this is a root cause for issues in our schools, in our streets, in our families across the city. Lead is also, there's also a study that showed that lead has a differential impact according to gender. They did a study where they looked at MRI brain scans of boys and girls, and they found that lead has a more devastating impact on the brain in boys than it does girls. So we can imagine how, especially if you want to add in our certain hormones like testosterone with males in our society, testosterone damaging, more damaging impact of lead, and you add those two together in a hyper segregated, redlined community, and there's your issue. There was a 2016 Ruder study that identified thousands of census tracts where the levels of lead poisoning were higher than they were in Flint, Michigan. Several of those census tracts are in Baltimore City, in East and West Baltimore. So I think we should keep those impacts in mind. Now, I have a few issues with what my colleagues said at the Health Department. Number one, and this was mentioned earlier, there is no safe level of toxic lead exposure. The statistics that they presented were with children over 10 micrograms per deciliter of lead. You should ask for statistics of children that were poisoned or exposed overall and who were exposed over five milligrams of lead, and that's what Andrea Brown mentioned. What about those children poisoned over five milligrams, which is the CDC reference level now, and exposed to lead, period? Because again, remember, children can be damaged at only two or three micrograms of lead in their blood. So that data should be presented as well, and that sort of downward slope that I think a lot of advocates and people sort of use to celebrate that we've come so far, I think is misleading. As Andrea Brown stated, there are over 700 children poisoned over five milligrams, not the 120 or so that they mentioned that are over 10. There's no safe level of lead in children's blood. So don't just present statistics that are over 10 micrograms per deciliter of lead. Secondly, there is no broad prevention strategy. Public health is about two things. Public health is about the prevention of the disease and promotion of health, and we have in this city no broad prevention strategy. What our strategy is, is to wait until children are tested with elevated blood lead levels before we then trigger these different interventions. The person going into the children's home to make sure that they have received case management, that's when we kick things into effect. And I think someone's just from, I believe it was Wes from GHHI, just mentioned, we need a strategy that actually, at birth, let's go into the home. Don't wait until the blood lead level shows anything. Get rid of lead in the homes in the, where our children are born first. Andrea Brown also mentioned this issue. Only half of those children ages one and two are being tested. What about the other half? Only a quarter, as Jamal mentioned, under the age of six are being tested. I don't like this notion of withhold, this punitive notion of let's withhold children from school if they don't have a lead certificate or if they don't have a lead blood test. I don't like that notion. That seems very punitive. School is a place where children need to be, and to have anything that says, oh, we're going to keep you out until you get this, I like your notion, Councilmember Clark. Let's have testing in the schools. Let's make sure, look, we're not going, we, we, we're going to provide the testing right now. You come in, bring your children in, get tested, and we're going to enroll them. Baltimore, we know that if you don't enroll children in our school, we're losing, we lose money if they're delayed in their admittance or enrollment. So I don't like that notion. I think we need to scrap that quick, fast, and in a hurry. We also mentioned other sources of lead, the demolition of lead dust. I think that's particularly issued. There's a study in Detroit that showed spikes in lead poisoning after demolition that took place there. Why aren't, I didn't hear anybody mention air quality monitors. Why aren't those on site? They should be around the site so we can get in real-time data about how much lead is being spewed in the air. I didn't hear anything about fence netting that could be wrapped around the, the site to capture whatever fugitive particles that can be captured by that netting on fence. I didn't hear, I'm not saying it's not done, I'm saying I didn't hear it mentioned.
Jason talked about wrapping.
I didn't hear him mention it in particular, but if other people mentioned, that's great.
Jason Hessler mentioned that as an expansion from the regular standards to the Project Core.
I missed it, I missed it, but...
And he didn't say all the words you said. He said a fence, wrapping.
Okay, that's why I missed it. So, and I am concerned about whether or not that's being followed. When Governor Hogan and Mayor Rawlins Blake, when they introduced, they had the kickoff of Project Core, they demolished a home, and it had no, no wedding, it had no fencing around it with the, so I mean, I'm very concerned about this notion. And how do people know that this protocol is being followed? I mean, what sort of accountability do we have in place within neighborhoods? I don't like also this notion of, someone mentioned there were 724 demolitions a year. By my calculations, that's slightly less than two per day. Why aren't the inspectors staying there the whole time? I mean, what do they have to do? If there's two per day, I mean, what's, I mean, unless my math is wrong or unless they bunch them together and then they're like, slow for other periods of time, two per day, you should be able to stay and see what's going on. There's also, I think, we're, we're missing the issue of a lack of treatment for the tens of thousands of children that have been poisoned in the city already. A lot of what we see is more so looking at, well, what are we doing going forward? Well, what about the children that were poisoned, like Freddie Gray, like Corinne Gaines? Freddie Gray and his sister were poisoned at 36 micrograms per deciliter of lead in their blood. Corinne Gaines, poisoned here in the city, killed in Baltimore County, she was poisoned at 22 micrograms per deciliter of lead in her blood in Baltimore City. So, and they're, and they were born in the 90s. They're, were adults before they were killed. We have tens of thousands of young adults and youth in our city that have already been poisoned. Where's the medical treatment for them? Where's the behavioral therapy for them and our youth? Where is the nutritional therapy? I think if we're talking about science, science says there are things that we can eat that combine with lead molecules in our blood to flush it out. Well, of course, if people are living in, in communities impacted by food apartheid, they're not going to be able to have access to the foods that can flush the lead out of their system. Why isn't that being mentioned here in this hearing? So in terms of solutions, Green and Healthy Homes wrote a report that said it would cost $845 million to remove lead from the paint in our homes in the city. Why aren't we talking about financing that? That number should be used by this committee, and we should search for the funds to make sure we can eliminate lead in the paint. But as others have mentioned, there's lead in other sources. I was at Carrollton Ridge's recreational center yesterday. Along the rec center wall, they had bottles of water that go into the filter, or the kind that you put over and, and the water comes out, right? Why do they have that? Because there's lead in the, in the pipes. We should be getting rid of that. What's the cost of that? Let's pay the cost that's needed to get rid of lead. That's prevention. That's prevention, not waiting until children are poisoned, but getting lead out of the community. And I also think there should be subsidized health insurance for the victims of toxic lead exposure. All of those tens of thousands of people that are still living in this city poisoned by lead, where's their health insurance? Yeah, they get lead checks, but that's meeting day-to-day expenses. That's not covering health insurance. That's not covering nutritional therapy or medical therapy. So we need to have that discussion. And finally, funding. We do need, I think someone from Green and Healthy Homes mentioned, bonds. So we got our tax, tax finance and economic development committee, that committee, they issue TIFs. Why don't we have a health TIF? Those are bonds that we could use to help get rid of lead in our city. I propose a $3 billion racial equity social impact bond. About half of that money would be used to get rid of lead. And then finally, we need to renegotiate our pilots, and I'm sure you all are hearing a lot about that, but when we don't collect taxes from our corporations, it's not just Kirwin. It's also issues like lead. And I think we should make sure that the discussion around getting more taxes is not just a one-track attack. It's not just about our schools. It's about everything that's impacting our youth and our children's future. And that's the real cost of corporations not paying the taxes that we desperately need in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Michael Ikonowski.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Michael Ikonowski. I'm a representative of the Maryland chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I appreciate the council's invitation to have a chance to speak today. Being one of the later speakers on the program, a lot of what I was going to say has been touched upon, so just to reiterate some of the things that other speakers have mentioned, there is no safe lead level. That wasn't always how things were considered, that having practiced over 40 years' time, the level that was considered harmful has been declining steadily over that, over that time. Forty years ago, a level of 45 was considered significant. About 10 years later, it went down to 25, and it's been a very steady drop in what level was considered necessary for action. As these levels have declined, the research that has been done has been identifying more and more effects of lead at much lower levels. You know, you hear a lot of numbers being tossed around, but just take a minute to consider just how small the amount of lead necessary to cause problems is. The five micrograms per deciliter means five one millionths of a gram of lead in 100 milliliters of fluid, of blood. So just, just wrap your heads around that for a minute. That's a very, very tiny, tiny amount of lead, and yet, research is showing that even at that level, it has effects on cognitive function, on behavior, you know, so it's, we're not, doesn't take much lead for a child to be poisoned and have long-lasting effects from that. The damage that does to nerve cells is irreversible, and once the damage is done, it can't be changed. Fortunately, kids do have some ability to develop, you know, as their brains are developing and growing, you know, they can compensate for that to some extent, but parts of their brain have suffered damage, and that may lead to problems with learning disabilities, with behavioral problems, with ADD, ADHD, a whole host of things that will interfere with their ability to learn in schools. And some follow-up studies that have been done have showed that kids who had elevated lead in early life are less likely to finish high school, are more likely to be absent more frequently in their later years in high school, and to have reading and learning disabilities that interfere with them being able to succeed in school. And one thing that hasn't been mentioned is that lead is a very persistent substance in the environment. Once it's there, it doesn't go away unless it's physically removed. It doesn't break down. It doesn't become less toxic. It doesn't change. It's always there. So any efforts to eliminate sources of lead need to make sure that it's, you know, really eliminated. The legislation over the years has banned lead from indoor use in paints. It's still used in some outdoor paint needs.
Sorry, you, run that one, one more time.
Yeah, that, that the ban was on indoor residential use of lead paint, but there are industrial uses of lead paint that are still permitted. The other thing legislatively that helped a lot was eliminating lead from gasoline. Burning gasoline would release lead vapors into the air that could be inhaled. Lead certainly is ingested by mouth as one of the main routes of poisoning, but it can also be inhaled through, through vapors. Eliminating lead from gasoline has also brought about a tremendous decrease in the lead levels in children over the, the time that that's gone to effect. A lot of people have mentioned some of the other sources of lead. Certainly, lead paint is the leading cause in many, many areas. Lead pipes, pipes soldered with lead through which drinking water flows are a problem. Certain folk remedies, spices, cosmetics that are brought in from other countries, ceramic cookware pottery that use lead paint in their glazing, and toys and jewelry that's made from lead or painted with lead-based paints from other countries are also potential sources of lead poisoning in children. The risks from lead poisoning in children also begins in utero, that if a mother has elevated lead level, that lead circulates into the fetus as well. And, you know, you can imagine the effect it has on a one- and two-year-old. You have a fetus whose brain is developing from a fertilized egg into an actual organ. Anything that impairs the blood, the function of the developing brain is going to be, you know, a devastating thing for that child to have to live with going forward. So as the Health Department has, has been doing, you know, inspecting houses where a pregnant woman is, is certainly a very important way to try to reduce the exposure to lead before it happens. And that's, I think, the, the point that we've reached in treating lead poisoning is that keeping it from occurring in the first place is where the priority needs to be right now. You know, it's been mentioned that children are at greater risk. The ages 12 months and 24 months were picked because those are the ages where, number one, the kids are putting everything in their mouths, their pacifier falls on a floor, they might have some lead dust on it, back of the mouth it goes, it falls out again, back of the mouth it goes. They crawl on the floor, so hands are getting into the lead dust all the time. When they're toddling around the house, they're leaning on the walls, they're leaning on the door frames for support. You know, their hands have a lot of potential for exposure to lead just in their normal day-to-day activities. So if there's lead there within the reach of their hands, they'll take that in their mouths and ingest it and then, you know, be poisoned by it.
So, Doctor. Is that, Mr. Chair?
Who was that?
Are you going to let him finish?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I had a moment there. I thought you were, I, I forgot where I was.
Okay. As has been mentioned, screening for lead is very important in identifying children who have had significant exposures to lead. The onsite point-of-care testing has been really revolutionary in getting more and more kids tested. As has been mentioned, you know, in an office practice, what would happen before is, all right, your one-year-old comes in, they get their checkup, they get their immunizations, and they get a lead, a lab test to take their children in for a lead test. Parents may go, as has been mentioned, they may have a long wait there. They may have a one-year-old or a two-year-old who's not going to sit still to have their blood drawn, and despite the best efforts of the lab technicians, they may not be able to obtain the blood sample. Being able to do it from a finger stick, which if done properly can be very reliable, will allow you to know, does this child have a significant level of lead or do they not? If the finger stick lead is elevated, then having a blood venous test is necessary to confirm the elevation of lead, because there are surface contaminants that can affect the finger stick tests that are not involved in a venous blood lead test. So I, I think at this point, you know, just would encourage the city council to support the efforts of the Health Department to really make primary prevention a strong priority, because even one child who has lead poisoning is one child too many. And the way things have been traditionally done is you do the blood test to identify the child who's got the elevated lead level, and then you go back and try to do remediation after the fact. So putting the, you know, the horse before the cart and getting the kids protected from lead while they are at risk is, is what's most important. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have at this point.
Councilman Clark?
Not only this, Doctor. You represent the American Academy of Pediatrics?
Right, the Maryland chapter. I serve as the chairperson of the Environmental Health Committee for the chapter.
Not to go on, but just briefly, can you rally the Maryland chapter of this to help us figure out how to get doctors into schools to try to, to try to help us get to the 100%?
To do the testing, you don't necessarily need a physician in the school to do the point-of-care testing. If, you know, if the Health Department has access to enough of the lead screening devices, they could go to the schools and do screening there. Again, you miss the kids before that who are... Again, you miss the kids before that who are at risk too, but again, you would get more kids tested. It has been a requirement for kids entering school to have the two-lead tests documented. If they do not have that done by age of six, then up to that age, they need at least one test showing that they have a normal level of lead or acceptable level of lead before attending school. So, being able to test at the school is certainly helpful at making sure more kids get screened, but again, the target age is really the two, even three, and under age range where the level of brain development is more susceptible to damage that will cause substantial problems down the road for them.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And are you able to provide your testimony to the committee?
Pardon me?
Can you provide your testimony? Or we have it already?
Oh, yeah, I, I was kind of asked to do this at the last minute, so...
Okay, you can email it.
What I can do is, is, you know, have this email to a member of your staff, and then you can read through all of that. Like I said, it reiterates a lot of what's already been presented, so...
That's fine, we just wanna make sure we have it in there.
Except the downside of being at the end of the, end of the program here.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Alexander Wooten, Morgan State University? No? Okay. All right, those are all the speakers that we lined up for the committee.
Great.
Is there any member of the public that'd like to speak? Okay. All right, so with that, one, I want to thank all of you for coming out on this very important issue, especially with the policy recommendations. We'll definitely be taking that back and looking at that, and if there are things that you wanted to say or missed, or think we need to, specifically to Dr. Brown, that we need, you know, let's continue this conversation. But with that, we are going to conclude the hearing for this one, but I suspect there'll be some policy-related hearings in this committee on this topic in the near future. So, with that, please make sure you take all of your belongings, and then, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.